Good evening, the time is now 5:32. I would like to call to order the April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Academic Achievement Committee Meeting of the School Year Twenty-three, Twenty-four to order. Welcome, everybody. I am Dr. Zippor Miller, Chair of this committee, and the District Five Representative of the Prince George's County Board of Education. If everyone could please introduce themselves, starting with the Vice Chair of this committee, the committee members, Prince George's Visiting Board Members, Prince George's County Administrative Staff, and then the Board Office, and thank you again, everybody, for being here this evening.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. I'm Pamela Boozer-Struther. I am the Vice Chair of the Committee and the District Three Board of Education Member.
David Murray, District One.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Brandon Jackson, School Board Member, District Six.
Hi, everyone. I'm Judy McInnes-Murray, ex-official member of this committee and Chair of the Board.
Yeah?
So, good evening, everyone. Doug Strader, Chief of Accountability.
Good evening. Kim McDaniel, Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Good evening. Jamie Bowers, Director of Testing, Research, and Evaluation.
Good evening. Victoria Holmes, Coordinating Supervisor for Language and Literacy.
Good evening. Simone McQuage, Elementary Reading Language Arts Supervisor.
Good afternoon. My name is Rosa Lopez, or Administrative Secretary.
Elizabeth Patrick, you there?
Good evening. I was hesitant because I'm still making it home, but I'm Rebel DePietre-Patrick. He is, and I'm the Director for the Prince George's County Board of Education Office. Thank you all so much for tuning in.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez, at this time, could you please call the roll?
Dr. Zippor Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Boozer-Struther?
Present.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mrs. Lasaya Freischer? Mr. Murray?
Here.
We have a quorum present, so we can go on to the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
The second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is adopted. Let's move on to the approval of the March eighteenth minutes. May I have a motion to approve the March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting minutes?
A move for approval of the March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting minutes.
Is there a second? Colleagues?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, I believe we have two registered public comment speakers. Ms. Lopez, are they there?
Yes, they are here.
Okay.
Okay, so I will move them over. One second.
Thank you.
I will move Ms. Phyllis Wright, who is our first public commenter for tonight, and then I will move Ms. Shannon Reed.
Okay, so will Ms. Shannon Reed be able to read, hear the guidelines as I give them out right now, or does she need to be in the room?
They are both listening to our, to the session.
Awesome. Okay, so you have been registered to speak in a public comment forum where the Academic Achievement Committee will listen to your comments. The committee will not address your comments. All registered speakers will have three minutes to make their presentation. Registered speakers may not relinquish any part of their speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. Speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, superintendent, principal, et cetera. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public participation process to move smoothly. So, our first speaker is Ms. Phyllis Wright, who will be speaking on hindrance from achieving and securing our scholars' future.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for allowing me to speak for these three minutes. First, I'd like to thank our board members. I truly like to thank Julie McInnes-Murray for the situation that I had this week at William Hall Academy that interrupted our children learning procession and always speaking out. I had doubts about Chair, Vice, the Chairperson, but I see that she's doing a fantastic, wonderful job, and please keep on supporting the scholars at Prince George's County Public School. My main concern is safety and well-being of our children. When we have parents coming to the school disrupting, when we have putting place, when we are putting people in place who are supposed to take charge of our school that's not there with the best interest of our scholars, I have a problem. I have two daughters who are in Prince George's County Public Schools, and I'm very invested in their education. I know at William Hall Academy, we've had two different principals since our first principal left, Mr. Evans. There's a problem. We have forty-five days left. I'm hoping and praying that you all would put someone in place there who's capable, who can reach out to the parents who education is invested with our children. I'm sorry, I have allergies. I'm a little under the weapon. First and foremost, if we don't educate our children in school, then they're going to educate themselves out in the street. I appreciate everything that you all are doing, but we got to do better to keep our children invested in schools. Please do not just throw someone over at William Hall Academy who's not qualified just to fill that position. We need someone there who can work with the parents and work with the students, someone who is invested in our children's education. I will be to the Board each and every time I need to be, because I, our scholars are our future, and if we don't invest in our children today, tomorrow we are paid for it. So, thank you so much, and I want to say thank you to House as well for addressing that situation, because it got out of control. That's been brewing for months and months and months. So, please, when we think about this, please invest in our children a little bit better. Thank you so much, and have a blessed evening, everyone.
Thank you.
And also, Brandon Jackson, thank you for always supporting me. And as you know, I'm staying strong. Let's protect our children. I was in flowers today. I will be back in flowers tomorrow, and yes, I will be wearing my T-shirt tomorrow, safe passage. So, let's keep it forward. Thank you all so very much. I had to get that in. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Ms. Shannon Reed, individual who'll be speaking on engagement.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Reed. I am a parent and a teacher in Prince George's County. And one of the things that I know from teaching is that when you have a hard problem, it is an opportunity for growth, and there is a tremendous amount of work that has to be done to bring you to an understanding of what needs to be done. As I've listened to the last few board meetings, including the board meeting on special education and bus transportation, one of the things that stood out for me is the approach that doesn't bring you closer to people. It has us talking about or discussing problems as if they are an abstraction. For instance, a bus problem that has lasted for a really, really long time. The first thing that we focus on are the bell schedules, and I think that is a part of the problem, and I commend you for trying to make the changes. I don't think that that is the main problem, based on my experience in schools. Teachers are leaving, and bus drivers are leaving, because we have not had our needs addressed for a long time. A lot of the students are really out of control. A lot of the students are massively disengaged. And when I look at the presentations that you all talk about, we often mention race. We often mention language, but we don't come any closer to understanding the individual factors that created this. The students are not failing because they're black. They're not failing because they lack language proficiency. They're failing because we have not put the structures in place to bring us close enough to students so that we can support them. For the last two years, our Chief Accountability Officer has come out and given a presentation that is inconsistent with what I know from schools about English language learners, about race. If, 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 if black boys are failing because they are black, then why are my black male students passing at a higher rate than my female students? Why are my English, why are my students who are developing language proficiency still passing? So, when we talk about things, it reduces our credibility. I just want to see us approach problems in a way where we have integrity, where we have the opportunity to actually grow, because we have faced this hard problem with dignity that allows people to say, guess what, you're not where you're supposed to be, but we are honestly going to make an endeavor to move you closer, because all of these students can learn. There's nothing you can say to convince me otherwise, because I'm in the classroom with them. You cannot see what teachers inside the classroom can see. That means the conversations have to start with the people on the ground, not with an audit, but with real people in real circumstances. I, just generally, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you for your time and attention. I just want you to consider how we can do things better, to engage people in ways where we can have meaningful conversations so that we can actually grow and not keep talking about the same thing.
Ms. Reed, thank you so much. Your time did expire.
I appreciate you. Take care.
Thank you so much.
I think we lost Dr. Miller, but would you like us to continue? Get started the presentation?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and step in till she comes back. Now, we will move on to item three point oh, and I apologize. Thank you so much to our public comment speakers for taking the time to address us this evening. We really appreciate it. Now, moving on to item three point oh, discussion items, presentations. This is administration will lead our presentation, so I'll now yield to... Is that Dr. McDaniel? Am I yielding to you?
Sure, yeah, I'll just open us up before trying-
Okay, I don't see Dr. White, so I want to make sure it's yielding to you to introduce Agenda Item Three Point One, Middle-of-Year DIBELS Eight Data Review. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Boozer-Struther. Ms. Lopez, I think accidentally changed me. Moved me out of the room, so I didn't know how to get back in.
Welcome, welcome back. I hand it back to you.
Oh, have we handed it to the team?
We have.
They can go ahead and start. I'm sorry. Awesome.
Thank you. So, this evening is all about data with our Department of Testing, Research, and Evaluation. So, Dr. Strader and Bowers will be sharing information on how our youngest learners performed on the DIBELS reading assessment, which really measures their foundational reading skills, and will also be taking time to review benchmark data for reading and mathematics. So, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bowers and Strader.
Good evening. So, I wanted to share two presentations with you this evening. Our first presentation is going to be for our middle-of-year DIBELS data from our students taking the assessment. And then our second presentation is going to be for Benchmark Two, which ended at the end of our second quarter in February. So, I always like to provide just a little bit of background information in case we have any new participants or board members that would like to look at the information. Our middle-of-year window dates were January eighth to February the seventh for our DIBELS assessment, and you can see across each of our four grade levels that were assessed, the check marks are showing which subtests or measures were assessed on the DIBELS middle-of-year assessment. So, overall, the data that you're going to see this evening is as of February the twenty-sixth. And for our overall DIBELS, we had a total of thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven students takes, almost forty thousand students, and we had an overall completion rate of about ninety-seven percent. Nineteen of our schools had a hundred percent completion rate. Our Lectora version of DIBELS, which is our Spanish version of DIBELS, had a completion rate of seventy-three percent with a total of eleven hundred and ninety-four students, and two of our schools that take the Lectora version had a hundred percent completion rate. Our progress monitoring statistics show that sixty-nine percent of our K-3 below-benchmark students, which is up from thirty-nine percent between beginning and middle-of-year last year, were progress monitored. And seventy-four percent of our kindergarten to third grade well-below-benchmark students were progress monitored at least once for DIBELS between benchmark, beginning of year and benchmark middle-of-year, which is up from forty-four percent last year at the same time. So, just some statistics to show you about how many students are participating and how often and how many of those students are being progress monitored in between administrations. So, just some refresh, as we have all of our subtests. These are the measures that are assessed on our DIBELS assessment. So, when you see these acronyms throughout the presentation, you can refer back to this slide, and it'll spell out what each of those acronyms stands for. So, looking at our performance outcomes for our middle-of-year, I wanted to start before we actually look at data and just draw your attention to how DIBELS looks at data from the beginning of year to middle-of-year. So, I wanted to point out in every single grade level, and I've shown you a screenshot of just our kindergarten to first and to second grade, looking at our nonsense word section, that the subtest cut scores dramatically increase between our beginning-of-year expectations on the assessment to what the assessment is expecting on the middle-of-year performance from students. So, just as an example, if you look at the red bar in both of those cells, you'll look at our beginning-of-year to middle-of-year jump from nonsense word is thirty to fifty-two, and then our words coded correctly are five to fourteen. So, those are pretty statistically significant jumps, and our expectations, that is showing that the expectations on the DIBELS assessment are dramatically increasing for students as their instruction continues from beginning-of-year to middle-of-year. If you look at that second orange bar from middle-of-year to end-of-year, you see a much less significant jump from the cut scores from middle-of-year to end-of-year. So, the reason why I point this out before we actually look at the data is to preface, and you're, you know, think your mindset is to be that when we're looking at beginning-of-year to middle-of-year, we are not going to see as large of percentage increase as we may see between last year to this year or middle-of-year to end-of-year. However, when I say that, we do still see some very, very good increases across all of our grade levels, but we might not see as much improvement or growth. And I wanted to draw your attention to one of the factors, and that happens to be the cut score differential between beginning-of-year and middle-of-year. So, holistically, if you look at our grades across how their comparison was from middle-of-year last year to middle-of-year this year, you're going to see some significant increases in our... Actually, I'm going to start with beginning-of-year. So, beginning-of-year to middle-of-year, you're going to see that our kindergarten students and our grade-one students did see only a one percentage point decrease. And a lot of that has contributed to those measures that I just showed you, where the beginning-of-year to middle-of-year cut scores are asking or demanding a lot more than they would have been at the beginning-of-year. In our grade-two, we did not see an improvement across all of our composite score subtests, and then our grade-three, we did see a one percent increase. So, what you're looking at here is the composite score, which means you're taking all of the subtests and combining those together and looking at almost an average of all of those composite score subtests together. So, when we look at all of them holistically, we didn't see the growth that we wanted to see in students who are reaching the at and above benchmark holistically across the grade levels. So, when we compare our students from last year at the middle-of-year to this year at the middle-of-year, we do see statistically significant increases, especially across grades one and across grades three. So, we look at holistically our composite scores from last year to this year. We are seeing very nice increases in our students who are demonstrating at and above benchmark level scores, and those would be your green and your blue bars to the right of each of those sliding scales. So, some highlights that I want to point out, as far as our early literacy across grades, we're looking at an increase of our students who are at and above benchmark from last year this time to this year this time. And why do we look at it this way? So, one of the things I showed you at the beginning was it's very hard to compare our students from beginning to middle-of-year when the cut scores are significantly different. But one of the things we also look at is how our students were doing this same time last year to this same time this year. We're looking at the same group of students. So, it is encouraging. We do want to see all of these things showing increases. So, you see across of our subtests, our phonemic awareness, our decoding, our nonsense words, our letter sound mapping, and our reading fluency, our oral reading, are showing increases across each grade level from last year this time to this year. So, that is a positive step, and we're looking at, you know, improving our early literacy rates across all of those important subtests in the DIBELS assessment. So, our Lectora students, we're seeing, looking at beginning-of-year to middle-of-year, we are seeing a significant improvement in our grades K and one and their early literacy skills. But I just want to draw your attention to, we were looking at previously for our students who were taking DIBELS in as our general assessment, about thirty-nine thousand students. Our Lectora is about eleven hundred. So, our enrollment size is much, much smaller. So, but we are looking at our students who are taking that, and they are seeing measurable improvement in taking this version of the assessment in Spanish. So, now I want to show you a little bit of the breakdown of beginning-of-year to middle-of-year, because when I showed the first slide, we were looking at one percentage decreases in two of our grades, a zero percent increase in one of our grades, and a one percent increase in our third grade. So, I want to break that down a little bit further to show you that it's not across the board that we're seeing decreases. So, for example, in our kindergarten students from beginning-of-year to middle-of-year, the only place that we're seeing a decrease is our students' phonemic awareness. And so, thinking about what that skill asks students to do, however, we are seeing very significant increases in our students' decoding and word reading, which is very, very positive. So, that just shows that we're looking at, you know, how are we helping our students in their phoneme segmentation in kindergarten? And then over to the right, I just want to draw your attention to the cut score from beginning-of-year to middle-of-year for this particular subtest. Students had to go from five to twenty-nine. So, that's a huge shift from beginning-to-middle-year. So, just keep that in context when you're looking at the percentage of increase or decrease, and then how far students had to go to achieve that at or above benchmark. Our next grade, first grade, same thing. We did see two places where we were decreasing our letter sounds and our reading accuracy. However, we increased in all of our other subtests. And then, just drawing your attention to this cut scores for those, almost doubled in both of those. So, the cut score for letter sounds was thirty to fifty-two, and then our cut score for reading accuracy is ten to twenty-one. And just to point out, reading accuracy and our reading fluency are some of those skills that aren't necessarily assessed in kindergarten, and students are for the first time assessed in first grade. So, even though we're not seeing the progress that we want to see specifically here, we are still seeing our students' increase in reading fluency, which is very important, that we are building those skills and reading fluency for our early readers. In second grade, we only saw one percent decrease in our reading fluency. However, the decoding, our reading accuracy, and our reading comprehension all saw increases. And then the cut score for our fluency for our second-grade students was seventy-eight to ninety-four. So, a huge increase in expectations of beginning-of-year to middle-of-year for our second-grade students. And then, last but not least, our third-grade students. So, we did see three areas of decline for our third-grade students, our word reading, our reading fluency, and our reading comprehension. And then I just want to highlight the cut scores over to the right. Most significantly, our reading fluency cut score expectations in third grade goes from seventy-three to one hundred and five in our third grade from beginning-to-middle-of-year. So, how are we faring in our district as looking at national comparison? So, looking at the normed data across all the other students across the nation that take the same assessment. So, three key takeaways or highlights that I wanted to point out. Our trends in Prince George's County early literacy rates, looking at the middle-of-year assessment benchmark, are underperforming national performance levels, with the exception of students who are below benchmark. So, when we think about below benchmark, that's that yellow band. And so, interestingly enough, when we look at the next table, those students at the below benchmark are actually excelling all of their peers across the nation, and we'll talk about that in a second. The second highlight is the number of Prince George's County students across grades K to three, and the well-below benchmark remains consistent at an average of about forty-two percentage points, which is about ten percentage points higher than the national average across their peers. And then, these performance trends are broadly consistent across grade levels, racial and ethnic groups, and service groups when we're looking at our data. So, in pointing out the first bullet from below, you're going to see visually what I was just talking about. Our students who are at below benchmark, we are decreasing those students who are below. We are increasing our students who are benchmark and above benchmark, just not at the same rate as the national group of students is doing so. However, we do want to make sure to point out that our well-below students are slightly above their peers at the national comparison rate. So, we want to make sure that we are, you know, in line with moving our students out of the well-below and the below, which means that we are moving a majority of our students to the at and above benchmark. So, just some, some interesting trends to look at, and we'll continue to look at this trend as we look at the end-of-year data as well. So, the last thing I want to show, and Simone is on here, and she's going to be able to speak to a lot more in-depth. Perhaps, if you have some questions, but I, our vendor shared some tutoring data that I thought was really important to share with you. A lot of times, we get asked, "Thank you for the data, but what are we doing about the data? What is, what are the interventions saying about how we're supporting our students?" And so, I wanted to show a little bit of that information with you. So, for our students who are deemed at-risk on our DIBELS assessment, that means that those students are at risk for reading difficulties in one or more of the subtests. To close that achievement cap, they need to make well or above-average growth. So, when our vendor was looking at our tutoring statistics, and they had just started this tutoring in the fall semester- and they had just started this tutoring in the fall semester, so we don't have a whole year's worth of tutoring data. So we can't really say that this tutoring is making a statistical significant increase or decrease. We just don't have enough data to support that claim yet. However, what we do have is looking at our one semester that we had at this time, forty percent of students who consistently attended the tutoring and were below or well below made well or above or above average growth. And so that's, that's the kind of statistic that we want to see. That means that the tutoring supports that we are putting in place for our most at risk learners, the tutoring supports are making an impact. They're having a positive impact and making a difference on the students. Looking at how they are scoring in the above at or well below or above average growth. But again, you know, we don't have enough statistics for me to say that this is absolutely making a difference, but the trend right now is showing us that the tutoring support is. So in looking at the impact, twenty five of our schools participated in the tutoring. We had, at the time of this data, we had seventy six tutors who were providing services. A thousand of our students were being supported at the time, although I'm sure Simone could probably give us an update. There are probably a lot more now, but at the time of this data. This is how many were supported and a number of hours of tutoring in the sessions that were reported to date in that semester that we're looking at. So just looking at students who are attending fewer than one session per week, more than a session and more than two sessions. Obviously, we would expect to see this amount of growth. You know, the more sessions that you are attending, the higher amount of growth that you are able to show. So students who are attending tutoring more consistently are more likely to, you know, make outsized growth above and beyond their peers that attended less sessions. And then students who are not enrolled in tutoring at all versus students who were attending more than two sessions. We see almost a twelve percent increase in those students who were consistently participating in the tutoring sessions compared to their peers who did not attend or enroll in those tutoring sessions. So looking at an increase of about seven percent of our students who were at or above benchmark for tutoring students compared to no change in the students who did not participate in this student or in the tutoring sessions at the same school. And then thirteen percent of the students who were in tutoring who scored well below at the beginning of the year positively changed their risk level or their risk status at the middle of year. So we're starting to see some of these positive trends of the students who were well below, those are red students who are starting to see some below and starting to really eke out just a little bit of our at and above benchmark. By using consistently the tutoring that Amplify is offering. So that is the DIBELS presentation. I'm gonna stop sharing. Because I want to check to see, do we want to continue and do the benchmark presentation or do we want to stop and answer questions? I'll let Dr. McDaniel share what she would prefer me to do.
Yeah, Dr. Miller, it's up to you. How would you like us to proceed?
I, I am, I am okay either way. The only thing that I want us as my colleagues to be cognizant of is six o'clock and we go till seven. So if we choose to answer questions now, it may be put in us to just start with one round and then go to the and then go to the next presentation because we wanna ensure we have enough time for both presentations. Colleagues, thoughts?
I'm happy to continue and then we can take questions at the end if that's.
I was just hope, I was just asking just in case we had a colleague who wanted to, you know, ask questions now. Okay, so we can continue.
Okay. Right. So I'm gonna continue with our data, looking at our benchmark two in reading and mathematics. So I wanna start by looking at our participation results. So all of our benchmark two data are as of March. There were approximately a hundred and sixty nine thousand nine hundred and thirty eight, so about a hundred and seventy thousand students who completed a reading and math marks benchmark assessment. Our math benchmark overall completion rate was ninety two percent. So we had about a hundred and two thousand seven hundred and five students complete at least one math mark, math benchmark assessment. And then our reading English language arts, we had an overall completion rate of about ninety three percent. And about sixty seven thousand two hundred and thirty three students completed a test. So the reason why you see the difference is because we have a lot of additional math assessments that we have. We have our accelerated math courses. We have our foundations of algebra. We have our high school mathematics and geometry algebra two quantitative modeling. So we have a lot of additional math courses and assessments that we offer. That's why we always see a discrepancy in how many students are participating in our English versus our mathematics benchmarks. So just some reminders, we are looking at our English and mathematics across four performance levels. So we are trying to streamline our assessment program, just like we saw with the DIBELS. We're trying to streamline and looking at four different performance levels. So our red is our emerging learners, our yellows are developing learners. Our mint color is our on track learner and our dark teal are advanced learners. And so these benchmarks are reported using four performance levels and a hundred and fifty point scale score range just to provide some more meaningful data for us teachers and parents and families. When we reported by percent correct or percentages, it did give information. However, putting students across this four performance level continuum allows them to get more information on a broader spectrum of how students are doing. It also allows us to look at other assessments that have a similar for performance level scale to see how students are doing in comparison. So based on our findings, we did see again measurable improvement from school year twenty three benchmark two to school year twenty four. And again, this is our fourth year of administering our benchmarks. And so the fact that we are continuing to see improvement over a four year span is definitely a good sign. That, that is something that we want to continue to track. Because at some point, some assessments may level off and you may, you know, not start to see as much growth. However, we are continuing to see measurable growth. So that is a good sign for our students. There was a seven percentage point increase from school year twenty three to twenty four on benchmark two mathematics across all grade levels. And this is something that we should definitely celebrate. We have definitely had some challenges in mathematics on our benchmark assessments. But to see a seven percentage point increase from last year this time to this year this time is, is an improvement that we definitely wanna celebrate for our mathematics achievement. So the following grade levels or courses did show improvement from benchmark two from last year to this year. So mathematics essentially, most of our grades saw improvement. So K one, two, three, four, five, seven, and our middle school courses of accelerated one and two, algebra, geometry, quantitative modeling, algebra two. So the fact that we are seeing growth across all of those courses and grade levels is definitely a positive sign. And that is how we got to that bullet above where we talked about our average or percentage point increase across all math grades. In reading, we saw an increase in our grades three, five, six, seven, and English nine. Which is a positive sign as well because we've had some pretty statistically significant increases in reading across each of our years. So the fact that we continue to see growth and our elementary readers, I think is a positive sign to the, how we're assessing students, how our progress monitoring, how we are offering tutoring services. So, you know, great things that I think we're continuing to see in our data. So just looking at overall performance level distribution, again, looking at our four performance levels, you can see we do still have the most significant number of students in our developing learner category in our reading benchmarks. However, we are starting to see a pretty significant increase in our on track learners as well. So our on track and our advanced learner, if we're talking in terms of our MCAP assessment, would be our proficient learners. So if you combine the mint green and the teal or dark green percentages together, those would be the percentages that you'd be looking at of students who are proficient on this particular assessment, if we talked about it in terms of proficiency. So when we're looking at from last year this time to this year this time, so just a reminder, last year this time, we looked at our benchmark data in terms of three different performance levels, a below and approaching and a met expectations. And what we heard from the field is that this approaching expectations was too broad. It contained too many students that we didn't get enough instructional information about. And so when you look at our new performance levels, our developing learner and our on track learner are now kind of a combination of what formerly were our approaching expectations to give teachers more instructional information on these students. So what we are seeing, which is a great sign, is that when you combine these two mint green and dark green colors over here to the right, those numbers are trending up and adding more percent of students than were meeting expectations last time this year. So if you look at for most of our reading tests, there is an increase in students meeting expectations from last year to this year is the one overall conclusion we can make from this data. So in terms of our students who are on track and versus who are students who are not quite on track, but just barely there are developing learners. We always look at how students are doing from moving from our developing to our on track or advanced. And so we always look at our measure is usually about six raw points based on our test form. And so this year we are down about twenty eight percent from the current benchmark, we are up twenty seven percent. So looking at twenty eight percent of our students are on track from moving from benchmark two last year to this year. The, the down arrow just indicates that's about one percentage point different than this time last year. So this time last year, we had about twenty eight percent of our students who were about six raw points or less away from becoming developing to on track learner. So we're still trending in the right direction. We just have one percentage point less. Nothing to be too concerned about. In our grade six and eight and grades nine to twelve, we have about twenty seven percentage points respectively across both, which is up one percentage point and up three percentage points from this time last year. So that means our middle school and high school students are trending up a little bit more and students who are moving closer from developing learner to on track learner. So in looking at our mathematics data, we're still looking at a majority of our students and emerging learner across our benchmark two data. We are still, you know, I think thinking about how we best support these students. The one positive sign is, I think that as we look at our middle school data, we are still, you know, focused on how we support those students, but we are seeing very small incremental increases of students who are on track and advanced in those grade levels. And then our high school as well. Especially our students who are engaged in algebra one, we are seeing a positive trend in looking at that information for our students to how they're performing in algebra one. So looking at from last year, the same time, so you can see the comparison of students who would have been our met expectations to our students who this year are on track and advanced. And you can see there's some very nice increases across our high school mathematics across several mathematics courses in middle school and then as well as our elementary mathematics courses. So again, I wanna draw your attention to this speaks to our overall average of seven percentage point increase across all grade levels. We are seeing a pretty, you know, measurable amount of growth across most, if not, you know, except for one or two grade levels in our mathematics. So that's definitely a good sign that we want to see. And looking at our mathematics benchmark data, very similarly, we look at students who are about four raw points away or less between being developing and on track learner. So in looking at, we do have increases across each of our grade bands, twenty four percentage points for our K to two, twenty three for our three to five, twelve and twelve for our middle school and high school students. We are just down one percentage point from the last year as an average for our K to two students. But we are up in our three to five, our six to eight and our students in high school, which were up five percentage points from this time last year. So we're seeing that students who are in a course or grade level last year, the same time in middle of year are showing more improvement or growth on this same standards this time this year. So just in thinking about terms of how we report this benchmark information to our schools, our teachers, our parents, our family, central office staff, board members, any outside external stakeholder that may want to look at the results. I put together a little flow chart of how we communicate this benchmark data. And so the first part is making sure that we're finalizing the benchmark summary. Making sure that we are cleaning the data, validating the data, removing duplicate forms, looking at making sure students complete an entire assessment. If they don't complete an entire assessment, we do not score that assessment and report that result because students may not have had the chance to fix it. Or they may have taken, started another assessment and then we just need to avoid the first one. So there's lots of different things that our office needs to do to ensure that the data is valid, reliable and clean. Once we do that, we have meetings with each content office that we schedule and go over each of the data for their grade band and course or content. We share and analyze that data with all of our other central offices, title one, our area offices, our English language department, special education. And then we also share our data with monitoring accountability, our strategic planning office, budgeting, instructional technology. So that's our first layer. We're sharing all that information with our central office staff. Then we get asked or, you know, other content offices or other offices shared out with other content leaders, academic leadership, support staff within schools. Schools are using it to make informed decisions, to allocate resources, to populate dashboards and reports, informed decision making. And then thinking about that school-based support, how we, you know, all of those things kind of align and help support that. We have a test data resource site for our internal users that we have lots of resources that are hands-on guides, videos, report trainings. We offer office hours for all of our schools. And looking at our data about how many students or how many schools have participated and looking at, we've had about a forty two to forty six percent of our schools at least have one representative that have reached out and gotten a training, either individual or through an email or a office hour this year. And then I wanna make sure and talk about how we help support our parents and families as well. So we do have a benchmark parent portal. So currently our benchmark portal, parents can have a login. As long as they have an email address with our student information system. And they can log in and they can see their student. They would come up to the dropdown menu. They would select their child's name. If they have more than one student in Prince George's County, the students would be alphabetically listed in the dropdown. Then you would see the completed test section and then each completed benchmark, reading mathematics, social studies and science would have a report over on the right that the parent could click and I'll show you an example of that on the next slide. And then we've also created a family guide that goes along with interpreting, looking at what each of those sections mean on the benchmark parent report. In the future, we are currently working with our vendor, our assessment vendor to move beyond just offering the benchmark assessment reports and results for parents and families. We want to move to offer some of our other assessments, perhaps DIBELS in the future, our MCAP assessments. So parents and families have one place to go to gather information for the assessment that their students are taking. So that is something in the works and hopefully we will be able to have something in place next school year. So parents and families can go to one place to look at assessment data reports and results for their children. So just for benchmarks, this is what the individual student report looks like. And looking at some similarities to how we look at our state assessments, it is consistent reporting with our M cap assessments with the four performance levels. It shows individual and domain performance. It does compare the child's school to the district. So looking at peers within their school as well as peers across the district. You can see results of multiple benchmarks. So you can see the results of not only benchmark one, but you can see benchmark two. And if a child's school decided to administer the optional benchmark three, it would also show results for benchmark three as well. So if I was a parent and I had a child that took algebra one in benchmark one, two and three, I'd be able to see all of those proficiencies and performances on one report. This is available to schools and parents and families. And then we also have our public facing test data resource site that parents and families can go to to get more information for these reports and how to interpret and look at them. So I'm looking at some of our most used data reports. So at the last board, not the last board meeting work session, the prior board meeting work session in March, I was able to share with you three different slides on what were the most utilized reports of schools and teachers. And so the item analysis report is the most utilized by our schools and teachers. And just as an example, this is what, an example of what that looks like in our system. So you can see that the first column shows the standard number. And so if you were in the platform itself, you could actually click on anything that's blue and it's a hyperlink. So if you were a teacher, you could click on this hyperlink and actually it would show you the writing, the language of what the actual standard is. It shows you the item number and or the trait, if that were the case. It shows you how many points were earned for that item versus how many points were possible for that item. It shows you a breakdown of how students performed. So if you see this little cluster of students here, that's also a hyperlink. So if I was a teacher and I clicked on this little cluster of students and it says forty and it has the sixty nine percent here, I would be able to see what students earned zero points on this item. And I would be able to see who those students were as well as I could see the eighteen students that got a one point out of one point overall on that item. And then over here, the last column is view the item. So the teacher can actually click on the item itself and see what the item looked like to help kind of prepare for, you know, the number of students that got it correct or incorrect and see, you know, what was the item asking students to do. So this kind of reporting is very consistent with our M cap reporting with the difference of the item. So currently our, our Maryland State Assessment Program does not have reading and mathematics public release items like we do for our district. So eventually they will, but just right now we only have this view item for our district assessments. Our state and district assessments show this type of view by item analysis, domain standard, item and student performance. It shows an actual item that the students responded to. It actually creates groups of students by response. That's this column in the breakdown column. And it's available to schools and central office users. Our next most used report is our student responses, and this actually looks at how students responded either in hand written form or typed form. And I just wanted to show you an example of that. So these are our hand scoring responses. So the system will actually show you the response. So what the student was able to type while they were working and also what they were able to draw either by hand or using the drawing pad or the drawing mechanism as part of the assessment, unusually to the right-hand side. So the student was trying to demonstrate that they, the student read four hundred and ten pages and they were typing out the equation. And then they were also able to draw out, looking at the four hundreds, the tens. Frame here to show kind of their example or their explanation for how they got to their response. So all items aligned to the M cap rubric. So each of our benchmark items and mathematics are aligned to our M cap Rubik standards and looking at how students respond and how they're scored. It shows written and typed constructive responses by all students. Shows actual item responded to in the rubric for scoring. So if you come, teachers can come up here. If you click on this little key as a teacher, you can actually see the rubric and see what the expectations are. And then you can also see the, if you click on the label, you can see the item itself and see what students are responding to. And then you can also generate a PDF. So if I wanted to print this out and show this to a parent, for example, you know, a child's trying to understand the difference between hundreds, tens and ones. Do they have a good place value system in place? I could show a parent, I'm an example of this on an assessment, how their student scored. It allows teachers to assess where students are in written responses on mathematics. And it's available to schools and central offices to look at this view. The last one is our trait scoring. And how this looks from a teacher point of view is we have two different traits and looking at writing our conventions and our expression. Again, same, we can click on the standard, we can look at how many points possible. And then we can see how many students were able to score in each of our scenarios of points. So it does that grouping. So it, the writing traits and scores are aligned to our end cap rubrics, just like our mathematics were. It shows a differentiation by scores by writing trait. So not only do you just see a writing score, you can see students how they scored in terms of their conventions of language fluency, sentence fluency, capitalization, punctuation, things like that, and then their expression. So being able to be a proficient writer, but being able to write great ideas and answer the question are different things. And so our benchmark assessment is able to differentiate between those two. So if a student needs more support in the expression area of writing, or they need more support in their conventions, this is able to give teachers a little bit more information specifically on what areas to focus on. It creates groups of students by written response type right here in this breakdown. It allows teachers to assess individual students' needs and their conventions or expression and is available to schools and central office staff. Now I'm going to stop. That was a lot of information.
It was. Thank you.
Sure.
So at this point, we could start with questions and start with our first round and the slow pace will keep time. If you can just use the raised hand icon and then I'll just recognize you from there. Dr. Bowers, are you okay if we go back, like if they ask from one dibbles versus benchmarks? Okay.
Sure, I'll keep them both up and I'll go back to you on this presentation that the question is about.
Okay. All right, Vice Chair Pamela Booze Struther.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for all the data. I was wondering if for literacy, if the have we had schools that have had visits from the blueprint implementation teams for literacy, the literacy expert teams that are now starting that work? Have they been, been to any of our schools yet?
I was just actually looking at that spreadsheet. Let me see if I can pull it up. And make sure momentarily. Okay, it looks like Point Ridge Elementary School is scheduled for four twelve. Then the next one will be James Harrison Elementary on four nineteen, Barack Obama Elementary on four twenty five, Mount Rainier Elementary on four twenty six, Cool Spring five two. And I can forward this to you, see if it in the notes by right, King's Word Elementary five three, Cesar Chavez five eight, Melwood five nine, Academy five ten, Panorama Elementary five sixteen, Columbia Park Elementary five seventeen. Last and finally, Bonard Woods Elementary on five twenty. Those are the schools.
That, that's great. I wasn't sure how many we would have in this first round. And I guess I'm really interested to hear feedback on that experience when in the next report about, you know, what the you know, what the expert teams discover and, and discuss with our our staff and the, any learnings that you want to bring back about this new experience with the blueprint implementation. Thank you.
What member, Lasai Fesha?
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for this extensive report, a lot of data, a lot to dig into. I have specific questions about two, two pieces. The first one is interested in the students that are progressing in the dibbles, that, that, the specific areas that we're measuring in dibbles. Are there any patterns of who those students are that we can glean on? Are there any factors that are helping these students progress that, that we have been able to start making some inferences about? Who are the students that are making those movements? That's the first question. And then I have another question about lectura. You mentioned that only seventy two percent of students this round. I want to know why that is. It's in comparison to the ninety something percentage that we had for our regular dibbles. So let's start with those two questions.
So I can start and then I'll see if Simone has any information. So your first question was about, do we look at specific schools that are making progress? So when every time we administer the dibbles assessment, we have a two and a half hour meeting with our vendor. And yes, they do show us a breakdown more specifically of schools and looking at what schools are making specific growth in both the regular dibbles and the electora version. So we do look at some of our schools that are making some higher percentage of growth. Where, if that's something that the board would wish to see, we can talk about how we can maybe share that in a different way. And then as far as lectura, I'll, I'll speak to the one point I know about. Some of our schools have the ability to offer the lectura to K through three. Some of our schools only opt to that have that Spanish version to only opt to have some of the grade levels participate in that assessment and not all. So for example, one of our schools has our students in grades two and three take both the lectura and the dibbles in English and Spanish. And that same school only offers the lectura in English. Or some schools only offer it to certain grades in Spanish. So the percent completion rate is the overall, who, who could possibly take the assessment? But that doesn't necessarily mean that we had twenty seven percent of our students not take it. Just depends on how schools choose to use that assessment for their students to participate. And I'll let Simone fill in if there's any other information that I'm not aware of.
So in, in kindergarten and first grade, the instruction is all in Spanish in our immersion schools. And so we wanted to ensure that their assessment matched the instruction. In second grade, the students start in English. And so many of those schools decided to provide both assessments so they get a sense for those teachers, the English teachers as well as their Spanish teachers. They'll have assessment data on the progress of those students as they're working through the language.
So we only do it for the immersion schools or?
We're only using lectura for the immersion schools at this time.
Got it. Okay. And that, that's helpful for me to understand that part. I would be very interested in getting more information about lessons learned. I think that the only way that we're going to get really good at this is to look at the kids and the, the teachers and the schools that are doing well and learn from them. So I would love to hear more about that. Thank you.
What chairman, it's mine.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Bo Bowers, for your presentation. I thought it was thorough. I, I liked the percentages that you gave for growth in the reading. My question is, you, you emphasized a lot with the reading, the tutoring. I did not hear tutoring for the math. Do we not do tutoring for math?
We do the, and I'll let Dr. McDaniel speak a little bit more to this. The tutoring slides I just shared were just specific to dibbles. So the vendor that's providing the dibbles assessment just shared the tutoring data just for their specific assessment. But I'll let Dr. McDaniel speak a little bit more to generalize tutoring for mathematics.
Okay. And when you do, Dr. Who did you say? McDaniel?
Yeah.
Okay. When you, when you share, Dr. McDaniel, can you also share if it's helping to a degree and adding to the capabilities of our students learning?
Yes. So again, so Dr. Bowers shares specifically the Amplify tutoring data just because that is tied directly to the dibbles assessment that she was sharing data from. But we do have a variety of different tutoring options for mathematics for our students. And so that is both small group tutoring for our students. And this is elementary, middle and high school have these opportunities. And then we also have one-on-one drop-in tutoring on both of those programs are through our partnership with Carnegie, Carnegie Learning. And then we also have our partnership with formerly, formerly TutorMe, now it's called, I believe, Paradept Tutor, which has tutoring and mathematics and a variety of other, every other content area as well. And we are seeing, and I can share some of that data with you all because we did share with our T twenty six goals to just kind of showcase how our students are performing in our tutoring programs and how many students are using it. But we are seeing increases in how our students are performing in mathematics, specifically those students participating and tutoring just from, especially those students who are in the small group tutoring because that's overtime. It's not just the drop-in. So there is a drop-in. If you have a question for homework, you have a question about a concept. But then our small group tutoring goes over time and they have the same tutor over that about six to eight weeks that they're together with their group. And we are seeing our students benefit from that greatly.
Okay. And I think one of the things that I'm interested in is as you assess the tutoring, can you help us, us to see, can you help us to see and know if, which tutoring is helping the students the most?
Yeah, so that, that, and we, we can share data on like how students are performing over the, over time. One of the problems, and this is a good problem to have, is we have so many supports available to students as far as the interventions that are available during the instructional day. Then the tutoring opportunities that are available. And then in some cases, schools that are having their own programs, after-school programs or tutoring programs specific to their population, it's not easy for us to pinpoint which intervention, which tutoring program is the thing that made the difference. And in many cases, it's this combination of wraparound supports of the intervention in the classroom, the differentiation from the teacher and the tutoring. But we do try to measure for those students who again are in those ongoing tutoring programs, how they're performing overtime to just give us some of that data.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Vice Chair Pamela Booze Struther, do you mind taking over so I can ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you. So, hi, thank you so much. We asked for data and you gave us data and we appreciate it. And the fact that we're seeing that students, the, the data is trending up is very encouraging. My question is from the dibbles presentation. And it's also piggybacks on the tutoring. When you showed us a slide on Amplify, I think that was slide number twenty three, you, I didn't, you said that there were twenty five schools that are using Amplify. slide number twenty-three, you ident, you said that there were twenty-five schools that are using Amplify. Then you followed up by showing us the um, the gains are better, the most, more sessions that they engage in, in tutoring. So two questions. Um, one is Amplify, one of the tutoring, um, oh, should I say, uh, added tutoring support that is given that is on demand or during class? And then, well, I said two questions, three. So one, is it on demand or during class? And then number two, um, if it's something that's on demand that they do on their own, are there ways that we can ensure that as board members that we can get this out to parents, to the schools? Like if the schools in my, one of the schools in my districts are one of the twenty-five, I really want them to take advantage of the resource. Then the third question is, did you look at the data um, and compare the schools that are using Amplify as a support versus a like school that is not and see um, how they compare? A lot right now.
I can take the question, the second question about looking at um, by schools. So um, this data is only looking at one semester. So we're looking at the students in between beginning and, and middle of year. Um, that's why the numbers are very small. So I would hope that when I report back to you at the end of the year, uh, and hopefully we can talk about our end of year DIBELS data uh, in a meeting that we would see an increase in the number of schools as well as the number of students who were supported. Uh, yes, Amplify did provide probably thirty or forty more slides um, after these four or five that I'm showing you that show very specific data for schools that took advantage of the supports. Um, so yes, they, that, that vendor is very, very strategic and we're providing these tutoring supports and we're going to show you the impact that it's having in the schools that we are using it. Uh, and so my hope would be that the further schools that continue to use that support, we continue to look at that data and see the same trend across, you know, our other elementary schools that are not currently using the tutoring. And then I'll let um, Simone, if there were other questions more specifically about the tutoring.
So to answer the question about, in a sense, the structure, in each one of the tutoring sites, the students work in groups of four with a live tutor during the school day. Uh, each lesson is scheduled for approximately thirty minutes. And students meet with their tutor um, at least two times a week. The focus for, the focus groups for this tutoring were those students who were scoring in the red and the yellow on our DIBELS assessment.
Simone, can you share just a little bit about how these schools were selected?
Sure. We started first looking at our CSI schools. We offered um, our CSI schools the first opportunity. Um, some of the schools, some of the CSI schools uh, decided to join and others um, felt that they had other interventions or other programs in place and they were not able to schedule them at that particular time. So we opened it up to other schools across the district who were interested um, in um, scheduling this opportunity for their students. We started off with K to three and we just launched a new group um, in grades four and five. Most of this tutoring, as I mentioned, happens during the school day. We have two anomalies with one school that's trying to do it um, in the morning before the school day starts and one school that's doing it at, at the end of the day. But outside of that, uh, the tutoring takes place uh, during the school day. The students remain in the classroom on their devices um, with their headsets and they work directly with their tutor, their assigned tutor.
Thank you so much. It's helpful.
Certainly.
All right. I could take back over, Vice Chair. Any more questions? Oh, Board Member LaSaya Frazier and then uh, Board Chair Judy McDaniel, in that order.
Thank you. My next set of questions has to do with the benchmark presentation. Specifically, I wanted to hone in in the parent um, portal. And I wanted to talk a little bit about just looking at it, uh, the report that you pulled up. Um, and in looking at it with a lens of being an educator for twenty years, it's a very dense and difficult report to look at. So what I'm wondering is, how are we simplifying these reports for parents that may not have not even a third grade reading level? Um, are we providing them with training? Are we providing them? How do, how are we measuring whether, e- even if these parents are, are being able to access the reports? So that's one part. Um, and the other part that I wanted to talk a little bit about was about, which is a little off the cuff in a way in terms of, of data, but um, it, a- as I was reading the information, I was thinking about that, I think it's one percent or two percent of students that are um, making um, accessing at a advanced proficiency level in math at the senior level. And I'm wondering about that two percent. Um, who are they? Are they students that are in specialty programs? Are they across the board? Are they clustered into specific schools? And then a follow-up to that, that I was wondering that I have is in terms of, are we at, at all um, keeping track of data once our students leave us and they go into like Prince George's Community College, for example? How many of them are able to enter a full-on college math course versus having to take remedial? So a few questions.
Okay, uh, I can take probably your first two, um, and then maybe someone else for your third. Um, I agree with you. Our benchmark, um, and I'll share my screen just so we can look at it again. Our benchmark um, individual student report, um, much like our state assessment individual student report um, is very, very busy and has a lot of information. Um, there are a lot of um, very high-level vocabulary words, um, things that parents may or may not understand. Um, but a, a few things, we do have a companion guide that goes with this that breaks down our individual student report into um, easier-to-read or digestible language for our parents. Uh, we do also have our um, guide in Spanish and French to, uh, for our families that need it um, in Spanish and French. Uh, but I agree with you. That's something that we're working with our vendor on because sometimes our vendor uh, thinks that they're doing a, a, a good service and reporting out the data as they see it. But sometimes it's not always parent and family-friendly uh, to help parents um, digest and understand. They see what the data showing, but not really what they can do with it um, as a parent and a family member. And so that's one of the things our office is, is trying to work on next year when we offer hopefully more of our assessment data um, on, in our parent and family portal. Um, that's something that I want to continue to work on as something of resource um, of, you know, informational evening that builds data literacy uh, to help our parents and families better to not only understand this, but what does it mean? What does it mean for me as a parent and a family? I can see that my child scored, you know, this scale score number, but what does that mean? Um, what, how does that help me as a parent understand where they are in their reading and writing uh, or in their mathematics journey? Um, so that, that's something that's on our radar to continue to do. Uh, I think your question was referring to looking at this type of, when we're, when we're talking about who are those students that are performing in our on-track and advanced uh, learning? More specifically, our advanced learners?
Right.
Yeah, um, so that's something luckily we can look at uh, in our data systems. We have our schools uh, grouped by cluster and area. And so a lot of times when we share this data with our area office, we specifically point out what schools um, had higher performance or saw more growth uh, than other schools. And then that also springboards a really nice conversation with the area offices that support and oversee those schools. And what are some of the intervention support services, things going on in those schools that might have contributed um, to more students in the specifically on-track, but really our advanced learners? Um, we haven't looked at it from a lens of, are the students who are performing in our more, you know, specialty program, immersion, charter school? We haven't looked at it specifically from that lens um, to report out yet. But that's something that um, I will write down and we can think about that in the future of reporting out. What, what trends are we seeing? Are we seeing it in specific schools? And if so, maybe not the school, but what are the programs or the services that may be contributing to students who are performing uh, at a more advanced learner? Performance level?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm thinking. I, just, it's just about learning from the schools that are doing really great things. What can we glean and then how can we translate that into our other schools? Or transfer that, I mean. Um, and then the last question, I don't know if that has been looked at at all. I'm just curious about how our students are doing when they go on to um, for you, a two-year or four-year school, um, are they being able to access a college course? Or are they taking remedial courses? I don't know if we're able to track that at all or, or or thought of doing it.
Right. If I can, I also say, um, and I'll turn it over to Board Chair McKins Murray as you think about that question and then come back to Ms. like Saya Frazier because we did run out of time.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. My question, and leave this slide up because my question is around this slide. If we're measuring success and, and when a student is in the twelfth grade and they're emerging learner, that's a problem for me. So I guess what I'm trying to, to um, understand is what are we doing for these students, let's say seventh grade through twelfth grade where these numbers are in the seventy and sixty-five percentile? Because if you're in the twelfth grade going to, I don't even see how you're going to a college. So help me to understand why we should not be alarmed by the emergent learner data.
Well, I can start with what we're doing for students. Um, uh, I'll start with high school there. So of course we have our lab courses for students um, to be able to help to support them if they are performing below grade level. As you know, at the high school level, while there are core courses you have to take for graduation, um, our students are at different levels of mathematics just depending on um, where, what experience they've had in middle school with mathematics and they go across the course progression. But that's where all of those interventions um, that I was discussing earlier um, come into play because they are really tailored to the course and the student um, to make sure that we are um, getting them where they need to be. And this is the exact reason that we have our bench assessments um, so that we can see where students are and use them as information of how to continue to differentiate, how to better prepare our students, how to tailor our instruction, and what other interventions they may need. Um, at, at the elementary level, we have our core supports for students um, in mathematics. So everyone has access to DreamBox, but then we have additional interventions, uh, do the math that our students are engaged and if for those students in those red bands, the emerging, emerging learners to make sure that we're getting them that extra dose of the foundational mathematics skills so that they don't um, continue in that band as they're going up through the grade levels.
Okay, and finally, I know my time is up, Madam Chair, but if you will indulge, indulge me with uh, just uh, one more question?
Yes.
Thank you. As you bring us data back for the end of the year, which is two months from now, I would like to see the impact of that red, that emergent learner. I'd like to see a focus on that and see it going down or something or bring to this board what you believe you need for us to help you get to concentrate on that population.
And that information will really come to us when we get our MCAP scores. So again, we're using this, our benchmarks as a measure of how our students are performing on the standards that are going, that do show up on the MCAP for their respective grade levels. And so um, that's where we're hoping to see that, that decrease for our students to make sure that they're progressing from one band to the, to the other or even higher within those particular bands.
All right, I'll wait for another round. Thank you.
I was, um, did you want to go back to the question that Board Member LaSaya Frazier asked about the tracking?
And um, could you repeat the question, please?
So my wonder is are we tracking our students once they graduate from Prince George's County Public Schools? And gathering data to see how many of our students, once they leave us, are having to take remedial math courses when they get to college versus going to their general Math 100 class, for example?
And Dr. Bowles, I believe there's a survey that is administered annually where we get that data?
We um, give a graduate like exit survey for, so our students who graduate um, as seniors, we try to collect and, and this isn't a required survey, so we don't always get a hundred percent participation from all of our graduating seniors. Uh, we do collect information uh, and we do look at students um, as they matriculate into a two-year, four-year institution, um, whether it be in the state of Maryland or outside of the state of Maryland. Um, that's something that our research and evaluation office uh, can look at. We do provide some data uh, for some uh, outside entities that request it. But that's, if that's something that you would like to see, I'll see if I can see. Um, so you're more specifically wanting to look at students who leave our school system and potentially have to take a remedial course and one of like our core content courses as like a makeup course?
Yeah, I just want to know if they're post-secondary ready, basically, the, the question that I'm asking. Because it is one of our mandates is to look at that, whether our students are post-secondary ready. I'm also very interested in knowing how many of our students are being able to access dual-enrolled math courses or English courses um, while they're with us. So all that has to do with making sure that our students are being able to access college level well, while with us and after they're.
We can definitely, um, so as part of our scheduling, uh, we do collect information on a course if it's uh, linked or um, identified as a dual enrollment course. So we can certainly pull the numbers of students who are able to take a dual enrollment course for mathematics while they're enrolled in Prince George's County Public Schools.
And if you can, can you make it by district, please?
Sure.
So the answer to your second question uh, regarding the courses, you know, are students successful when they reach higher education? That was a bit more complicated because we don't have access to students' courses and grades once they enroll in higher ed. But we do get uh, information back from the higher institution. They will share with us uh, information regarding the districts, especially those that we partner with, Prince George's County Public, I mean, Community College as well as Bowie, um, some of the locals that we do have no use with, will share that information back with us. But we're dependent on them to give us that information. Um, but we do, uh, there's called the National Clearing House. That's another area where we receive information from. That uh, survey of sorts actually tells us about the success rate of our students and achieving their two-year degrees, four-year degrees, five-year degrees, you know, how long it takes them. So we do receive that type of information, but unfortunately that doesn't include individual course-type information. So uh, that's just to kind of give you a summary of the types of information that we get. And now we can, as Dr. Bowles, as she shared, we can follow up with what we do have.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking at the time. It is seven o'clock. Time has flown by and then no, we probably have additional questions. So could we send the additional questions? Dr. Schrader, should they come to you?
Yeah, that's fine. I'll work with Dr. White and we'll disseminate to the right party. Yeah, that's fine. I'll work with Dr. White and we'll disseminate to the right party.
Okay, all right. So as it is seven o'clock, thank you again for this really informative session. And really talking us through the data and being able to see where our students are. And we look forward to the next presentation at the board as we see how we continue to grow. So with that said, we'll go to item four point O, which is follow-up items. Follow-up items will be posted on board docs. And I would like to thank the public, my colleagues, PG CPS administrative staff, and the board office staff for joining us tonight. If there are no further action items, let's go to closing. So may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn the April fifteenth meeting of the Academic Achievement Committee.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. So it is now seven oh three and we adjourned. Thank you so much for coming and participating. Have a wonderful evening.